The City Council of Lathrow Village, or I should say for the 2017-2019 council. Madam Clerk, can you call, roll call please?
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a prayer.
Thank you. I invite everyone to say the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, at this time, all of the officials have an opportunity to give comments. The only person that would not be a newly elected person will be Bruce, so no comments. So, starting with my left, Ian, do you have any comments for 2017-2019 council?
Yeah, first, let me just extend my appreciation for everyone that voted for me and continue to support what I continue to do for you as Lathrow Village residents. I am committed to doing the right thing in the next two years. I've always been committed to doing the right thing. And my makeup is just that. Just have to continue to support people and continue to move our city forward. And at the same time, bridge a gap of friendship as well as civility. I'm going to focus totally on civility in 2020. And without mentioning anything else, we're going to focus on that. And we're going to also extend a hand. If anyone wants to take it personally, you can't do that, not as a city. We're all one. And we may look different, but at the end of the day, we're one big family, 4,100 of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, we want to just want to say thanks again for everyone who voted for me. Happy to be on the council again and will do my best for the next couple of years to move the city, continue to move the city forward along with my fellow council members. I think we have a good team and we'll keep working to make the city as great as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
Yes, I really am appreciative of all the votes, the confidence. Just bestowing the honor of being the council person again. I was top vote getter for the second time. That was really, really an honor to me. And to all of my colleagues, I look forward to serving in the next four years with you together as we push the city forward. We have a lot of work ahead of us and I think together that we can do it. But it is truly an honor to be a part of Lathrow Village, to be a part of the community and to serve on this council. So, God bless Lathrow Village and God bless us.
Thank you. So, I do thank everyone for their support of me. It is amazing, of all the things, like I was just telling Bruce, me going into my ninth year on council. And I'm thinking, I started out with a little kid and now I have a 20-year-old. So, I mean, it was, this is just, it's almost bittersweet because I used to count it that way. Like, oh, when I get finished with this, my child will be 20. And here we are. So, I thank you very much. We have a lot to do going forward. And I have seen the tremendous push from each person on the council to make Lathrow Village the best city possible. And I really do appreciate that. I think we have a very cohesive group and I'm glad that it's the five of us again. So, thank you and thank you for everyone that came to show up tonight. So, were there any reports that we needed to do? Any reports? Nope? Okay, well, I'll take the motion for the adjournment of sign and die.
So moved.
Second.
Any objections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You are adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here this evening. Our first order of business will be to, I will give the oath of office to everyone who was elected on November 5th. And I'm going to do this in alphabetical order. Along with your oath from the Oakland County, Oakland County Clerk, you have your certificate of your election. And I will present that to you this evening as well. Mr. Ferguson. Councilmember Ferguson. And Mr. Ferguson's term will expire in two years on November 8, 2021. And if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Ian Andrew Ferguson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Lathrow Village. And that I will discharge my duties.
And that I will discharge my duties.
As City Councilmember.
As City Councilmember.
For the City of Lathrow Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrow Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. You're so welcome. I'll sign it and I'll send you. And this is your certificate of election. Congratulations. All right. Michael Garrett.
He knows I'm staying here.
Raise your right hand. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Michael Lynn Garrett.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrow Village.
And that I will discharge my duties.
And I will discharge my duties.
As City Councilmember.
As City Councilmember.
For the City of Lathrow Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrow Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And your term expires in four years on November 13, 2023. Your certificate.
Thank you.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
When I open my box?
If you could raise your right hand, please. Aye, Salim Ar Siddiqui.
Aye, Salim Ar Siddiqui.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Michigan.
Of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Of the City of Lathrow Village.
Of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrow Village.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of City Councilmember.
Of City Councilmember.
For the City of Lathrow Village.
For the City of Lathrow Village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. November 8, 2021. Thank you. Your certificate of election. You're welcome. And Councilmember Stallings. This man. If you could raise your right hand, please. Aye, Donna Stallings.
Aye, Donna Stallings.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Michigan.
Of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Of the City of Lathrow Village.
Of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Lathrow Village.
Of the City of Lathrow Village.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of City Councilmember.
The duties of City Councilmember.
For the City of Lathrow Village.
For the City of Lathrow Village.
Michigan.
Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your fourth term that will expire November 13, 2023. I know, it seems so far away, but it's not so quick. Thank you. Your certificate of allegiance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll work very hard. Next on the agenda, we have to have an election of the mayor. And I need a motion and a second for someone's name to be brought for. And this is for the mayor, the office of mayor.
Make a motion for Kelly Garrett to continue on or to be mayor of the City of Lathrow Village. Selecting?
I'm going to pass down ballot. I need you to complete it. There's a vote for one, then pass them back down and I'll count them.
So you're saying for, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? That you're saying that anyone's name to go on the ballot would have to be?
All the names are here on the ballot and you can vote for one.
Okay.
And you know what? I'm happy if I could please have a roll call for that motion and second. So I'm going to go down the list here and I'll start with Councilmember Ferguson. And this is to appoint Kelly Garrett as mayor.
Should I do the?
And this is the roll call. First we're going to do roll call and then you can vote.
Here.
Now, roll call will be, I need.
I couldn't make a motion.
Councilmember Ferguson, your vote, please.
I could, but usually you want. A verbal vote?
To appoint Kelly Garrett. This is for the roll call. We did a move in support and I just want a motion carried.
Basically, the yay or the nay.
For the motion.
For the motion, not for.
Oh, I see.
You're going to vote by your ballots.
Yay.
Okay.
Right.
Garrett.
Yay.
Cantor.
Yay.
Siddiqui.
Yes.
Stallings.
I am, for her name to be on the ballot?
This is the motion that was brought.
For her name to be on the ballot?
Everyone's name is on the ballot, but this is the motion that was brought to the floor.
Okay, so.
It's either yes or no.
Okay, no.
Motion carried. Now, if you all can devote on your ballots for me, please, and send them back down.
Just wanted to put my name in the hat.
And the vote is four to one for Michael Garrett to be the next mayor or continue as mayor. And I will swear you in with your oath. Hi, and repeat your name, please.
Aye, Michael Lynn Garrett.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrow Village.
And that I will discharge my duties of.
And I will discharge my duties of.
Mayor for the City of Lathrow Village.
Mayor of the City of Lathrow Village.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next office that needs to be voted on will be Mayor Pro Tem. And we will go through the same process. Just a moment, moment, please. Okay, if I can get someone to bring forth a name.
I'll make the motion for Bruce Cantor to be mayor of Pro Tem.
Second.
Should have done this before. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried. And I will send you down ballot to vote for Mayor Pro Tem. And this will be on blue paper. That's just to keep me straight so that I would not get the wrong stuff. I'll go and vote for you. Unanimous vote for Mayor Pro Tem Cantor. I will swear you in, sir. If you will raise your right hand for me, please.
Aye, Bruce Cantor.
Aye, Bruce Cantor.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Michigan.
Of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Of the City of Lathrow Village.
Of the City of Lathrow Village.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Lathrow Village.
Of the City of Lathrow Village.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of Mayor Pro Tem.
Of Mayor Pro Tem.
For the City of Lathrow Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrow Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So, we don't have to read, not really sign, but we can just go right into the agenda?
Uh, yes. We just turn the meeting back over to you, Madam Mayor, and we'll move forward with the agenda.
Thank you.
And thank you all and congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. So, I need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda has been approved.
Um, next for the consent agenda, which is going to include approvals of amendments from October 24th, City Council Study Session, Approval Amendments, October 24th, City Council Meeting, Approval Amendments, October 29th, Joint Meeting with the Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority, The Approval Amendments from November 4th, 2019, Study Session, Approval Amendment, November 7th, 2019, Joint Meeting with City of Southville and the Village of Beverly Hills.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consideration for the approval of dispersment reports. First one is for the dispersment period of 10/1/2019 to 10/15/2019. And that's for $62,714.03. Second one is dispersment period, October 16th, 2019 through October 1st, 2019, for $998,691.02.
I'll make a motion to approve the dispersment report from October 1st, 2019 to October 15th, 2019, for $62,714.03. Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consideration or acceptance of the department reports.
You want to, what about the?
We got to do the second dispersment.
Can I make a motion to?
Oh, I'd like to put them together, but go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the dispersment period of 10/16/2019 to 10/31/2019 in the amount of the $998,691.02.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, the consideration of acceptance of the department reports.
I'll make a motion to consider the acceptance of the department reports.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll come to the point of the public comment for items that are not on the agenda. So if there's anyone that wants to come to the microphone, please state your address.
My name is Henry Swift and I live at 18535 Santa Anne Avenue. I have been a resident of Lathrow Village for 40 years. And I was one of the 30% that was in favor and certainly voted for the passage of the initiative. So I was very disappointed. One of my biggest problem for the past two years has been the storm ditches. And what's happening at my particular place is that water is settling and remains in the ditch. Now, in the winter, of course, it's fine. But in the summer, with, of course, the mosquito-borne encephalitis, it's a serious, serious problem. So with the failure to pass, because that was one of the items that was going to obviously be covered. So now my question is, what will happen? I talked with the desk clerk downstairs and she says you're limited in terms of people able to come out and take care of the covert and that kind of problem. Someone did come out, but nothing came of it. So I guess that's my first concern, is what is going to happen now that the initiative did not pass? I'll make it short, but I want to also, at this time, express appreciation to Mayor Kelly. One of the other problems I've had is that there's a DTE transformer right on the edge of my property. So in 2017, I returned from up north and there had been a severe transformer surge that had disabled not only systems in my home, but in the neighborhood as well. Garage openers were disabled. The furnace, air conditioning was disabled, other appliances. It happened again, June, this past summer. And so, as then, I sent a letter to DTE and PSC to make restitution. Well, in 2017, they refused, saying it wasn't their responsibility and that things happen, you know? This year, when it happened in June, the 22nd, it happened that it started, ignited a fire in my front room. And owing to the fact that it happened in the morning, my wife and I were able to come down and see smoke billowing out of the room. And because of the fact that we had just gotten up, I was able to extinguish it. So I shuttered. So I should have to think that if that had happened at 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock at night, The room and house would have been engulfed. So that's a serious problem, and the reason I want to thank you is I sent the, the council, Um, my, my report and my address to DTE. And, uh, I knew they were going to assume the same response, But thanks to your intervention, in which you contacted apparently, uh, officials at DTE and government officials, They reluctantly responded, uh, about four months just last week, By saying they would make restitution, however, they would not assume liability. So I've got two issues. Uh, the transformer is, is still there. I don't know. And of course, they, they met, DTE official met here to reassure the community that something was going to be done. That was before the June 22nd, or a second, 22nd event happened in my home. Uh, needless to say, uh, I didn't realize that the furnace was also, uh, disabled and components, The motor, the motherboard, uh, disabled, so I couldn't get air conditioning. And that's when I realized that that had been affected too. So I've had a series of problems with DTE and their reluctance, if not, uh, refusal to, uh, to make restitution. So I want to thank you for stepping in, because I think it was your intervention that caused them to, uh, to respond, You know, in a small fashion. Uh, obviously, I cannot reveal what the settlement was, but, uh, I want to thank you really sincerely.
Thank you. And we'll, I'll talk to you more about the, uh, transformer.
Okay.
Do you want to take the first part?
Um, you come up. Bruce is going to answer about the first part.
Yeah, so, um, regarding the, uh, the ditches, uh, obviously, as you know, the, the, the election, you know, voted that down. For now, it's, we're kind of carrying on the way we have, and so what I would suggest is, is getting with, um, uh, Dr. Mitchell over there To get our city engineer out and, and try to figure out why your, your ditch is filling up. I mean, there's a lot of different reasons, you know, they work, the, the street works as a system, So there, there could be a variety of reasons, tree roots, uneven, filled in, you know, there's a whole bunch of reasons, but they can look at it. Um, going forward, um, our committee will, will begin meeting again sometime soon. Um, we'll begin looking at, uh, you know, retooling possibly another proposal, Um, which may or may not include, um, you know, a, a citywide ditch program. With the, the, a ditching program could be pulled out of that and done, you know, on a special assessment basis. That's, that's one possibility. Um, in fact, we had talked about that a few times, uh, like a year and a half ago on councils, Whether or not we wanted to institute a program like that. We never went forward on it, and it got bundled into the, the road, because it really does make sense to do the two of those together. Um, but again, voters voted that down, so it is a possibility that we could pull it out and do it via special assessment. We, we, long and the short of it is, we really need to get the committee back together and talk about what makes sense And what, what alternatives we think we can put out that maybe the voters will accept. So, um, so for now, I would follow through with the city and see if we can, maybe there's a simple solution. And going forward, we're going to work on it again, so.
Thank you.
And I, I just want to reiterate too, that, so we know that the roads and the ditches are still a problem in the city. They didn't, they didn't go away.
With the no vote.
After the election. They didn't, that problem didn't go away. So, we as a city need to come up with solutions. So we're going to, you know, obviously, the, the city residents did not want to move forward with the plan that was proposed. We have to come up with an alternate plan, and we're going to do that, you know, to address the roads, ditches, whatever we need to do in the city, so.
Just one more thing. The second part of your concern, which was the, um, transformer. So we had an open house with DTE several months ago, and, and, uh, they reassured all the residents that showed up That they would make anything right, and also they're working on transformers and upgrading them. So, and I thought there was going to be a follow-up meeting, probably in 2020. They mentioned coming back to just kind of assess, but I don't think we had a target date. So maybe we, I should try to follow up and figure out if there's a follow-up date for the residents, Because, um, they did indicate that when I showed up, so. But they're, they're working with us, so I think we should be okay. And, um, as far as the, um, the, 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 the road and the ditches, I, I just want to say, um, at this time, That Bruce went above and beyond the call of duty to disseminate factual information. I just want to extend my appreciation to you to do that. And ironically enough, a lot of the no voters sent you, uh, appreciation, and I wanted to extend that, Because what you did, you went above and beyond the call of duty for this city To disseminate factual information. You did not candy coat it, and you, you remained, uh, nonpartisan through the whole process. You got beat up over the last three months, literally and figuratively and emotionally. And I, I got to tell you, it was worth it, because we had to stand and, and support that.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate what you did. I hope everybody else.
I'll have to jump in on that as well. You did an excellent job, and, and, uh, the way that you coordinated, The way that you were, you were just on it, um, and really appreciate. I think it's definitely the springboard to correct our streets, and, so thank you.
We'll get there.
Yeah.
We'll get there eventually.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Joy Powell, and my address is 27780 California Drive Northeast. And, um, I, some, I also want to support what was previously said. I, I believe that this, the proposal that was given to the voters to vote on was outstanding. It was excellent. It is what we should do. However, as reality sets in, we can't always do what we should do, so we find what we can do. And I just hope that the council will not pull back too far, Uh, but indeed, uh, try to get done, uh, what will keep the city an excellent city, And perhaps make people understand that really their property values depend on the quality of the infrastructure here. And if it is allowed to decline, then that will affect everyone who lives here. We, I also want to add that, uh, at our house or on our street, We also have that problem with standing water when we get heavy rains, and it's a dangerous situation. With mosquitoes. It's just not a healthy environment, uh, when that happens, so, uh, it would be wonderful if we could do something about that. But again, uh, thank you to City Council. I thought you did an excellent job. It was superb, top-notch, and we're very grateful.
Um, we just talked about this in our study session, and, um, the committee will get back together in December Just to kind of, you know, talk some things through, and then we'll have to go back to the drawing board.
And the community is welcome to join those discussions, so. For the community that felt like they wanted more input, now is the time to come to the meetings and...
And we'll, and we'll announce them.
Yes, okay.
Was there anyone else that wanted to speak?
Yeah, Keith, if the problem gets, if the problem gets solved, how are we going to, what are we going to talk about on our answering machine messages?
Good evening, City Council and Mayor, City Attorney. We are the residents of 27315 Lathir Boulevard. So, um, we have a few issues that we wish to express to you this evening. Uh, if you recall, at the, uh, September, the 23rd, 2019, Lathir Village City Council Meeting, Uh, we expressed our concerns of, uh, ethnic intimidation, harassment, Uh, by certain European-American residents of Lathir Village. Also, despite voicing our concerns, there appears to be no consequences or repercussions for their actions. Uh, I say this because there are ongoing issues that we are still having to contend with, Such as property vandalism, trespassing, taunting, and harassment. So as a direct result of this, we are providing you with surveillance footage, as well as body cam footage, Of the evidence in, in to support of our allegations. And this footage also reveals the facial identity of the harassers and vandalizers. The latest incidents are trespass, property, and vehicle vandalism, Where four European-American teenagers vandalized our property. One of the four placed nails in our driveway and tires, And he also damaged the valve stem of the tire, for which we had to have repaired. After our property was vandalized, they had the indignation to take photos of the vandalism while they posed by it. This is some of the group responsible for previously littering our yard with dog feces placed in black bags. If you recall, well, at that time, we didn't know the identity of the individuals who came by our home antagonizing us, But Hillary and Eli, where Hillary stated, "Why did you move here? You don't belong..."
So before you go on, because this is all allegations, and I don't want anyone in this room to be involved in any kind of lawsuit.
Here we are, right here.
I'm just saying before, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, and before you give out names, and, because this is an...
Well, I, I have the information from the FOIA report.
Before we do the allegations, we are not a, a, a...
No, I understand that. Okay, so let me continue.
Let me, let me, no, let me, let me finish, okay?
Go ahead, ma'am.
So, I understand of what was going on. We, we're quite aware of it. So my one question to both of you.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you provided all of this information to the Chief of Police?
Well, we have provided the information to Detective Sergeant Michael Zhang with the Lathir Village Police Department. And we provided this information on October the 31st, the day after the vandalism to our property. And as, as of today, we have not heard anything in response.
Okay, so, but the, the CDs that you have are the, the, um, all of the videos, thank you.
Well, this is a compilation of body camera footage, as well as surveillance footage, To support my allegations or our allegations of the harassment and intimidation That we have been subjected to unjustly. The ethnic intimidation, the prejudicial behavior, the property damage, and the trespass.
Do the, do the police have copies of the compilation?
The, the videos.
What you're holding in your hand there?
So, what I have done is taken the liberty to go through all of my files And provide additional information as well, which I will also provide to the City Council members and the mayor as well, Because it appears as though there are no consequences or repercussions to their actions, Because, because they continue to act unlawfully, okay? So, I would just say this.
Yes, or no, does the, the...
Yeah, well, we, we provided, we provided Detective Sergeant Michael Zhang
Okay.
This information. So I would just say this.
And you had a police report from that?
We have several police reports.
Okay.
I FOIA'd it. So, what it is, is they, what they do is, is they attempt to, or should I say, not attempt to, They, they initiate a verbal altercation, and then contact law enforcement to sic them upon us And vilify us to make it appear as though we are the villains, when in fact, we're not. You're coming to our residents harassing us. And, and actually, these bigoted individuals, this is my opinion, Who promote and condone this intimidation and harassment are the ones who don't belong in Lathir Village. We've been here since July. We don't harass anyone. We don't bother anyone. Because, simply because we stated, "Do not allow your dogs to come on our property to urinate or defecate." You're going to target us by sending people over here to let their dog deliberately come on our yard To urinate or defecate and throw bags of crap in our yard. So, it is my belief, my belief, because I have my beliefs, or our belief, Because we do not go along to get along, right? Especially when our rights are being violated. We have become the target of a conspired effort To terrorize and intimidate us, or to harass us. All we ask simply was don't bring your dogs all the way to our property to crap. That's all we asked initially, and then they kept doing it despite us, to be funny, to harass us, and try to intimidate us, okay? The latest incident, as I stated, was October the 30th, when they vandalized our property, okay? And one of our vehicles, they put nails in the tires, they put nails in the driveway, and damaged the valve stem, for which we had to have repaired. So, also, on the day of the snowstorm, my son and I are out there removing the snow. A black Ford Flex pulls up with tinted windows. Windows were, were partially down. So they stopped, they slowed to a stop, and they stopped right, right in front of us. So I'm like, okay, what is this? What is this? Someone we know? I look, no, it's someone we knows, that we know, rather, and then they slow off, you know, pull it off slowly. I take this as a form of, of intimidation. You know, in light of everything that's occurred since we have been here, you can't take anything for granted, especially how the world is now. So yeah, it's a concern. This footage is also here, okay? This is a further attempt at intimidation. We're not going anywhere. We brought our home here. This is where we are going to live. At the last City Council meeting, we asked, "Just leave us alone." Live and they live. But it appears as though, because of no consequence or repercussion, they wish to continue with this unlawful behavior. So naturally, because of situational awareness, as I previously stated, we're on alert, you know? So, I'll just say this in closing. I don't want to take up too much time, But we thank you for allowing us, allowing us to use this platform to voice our concerns. If you don't stand for something, you fall for everything. And disrespect has no expiration date.
No. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I want to hand them right to the police. Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to, uh, speak? Hearing none. Public comment is closed. Um, we'll go right into our, um, public hearing for the 2020 Community Development Block Grant.
Mayor and Council, um, what you have before you is the announcement of the public hearing For the Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG for year 2020. The allocation is approximately $7,000, and we are asking that it be designated for transportation and senior services.
Thank you. So, we just have to open up the hearing? Anyone want to, uh, speak on behalf of the CDBG grant? Okay, hearing none, then I'll close the, uh, the hearing. Um, so now we're going to be moving into our action requests. First one is the consideration for approval of the Jagged Fork Holdings LLC Class C liquor license.
I can give a little background on this. Um, so the City Council in March of this year, 2019, Approved a special land use for the Jagged Fork Holdings Corporation To operate a sit-down restaurant at 28601 Southfield Road. Included in that special land use approval was the authorization for the sale of alcohol, uh, beer, wine, and liquor That that establishment continued upon them, applying for and obtaining a Class C license from the state. Uh, September 19th, the city received their application for that Class C approval. This, uh, the police department has done their due diligence and completed the background checks And provided council with a favorable recommendation. I see their attorney, Mr. Draper, standing in the background, uh, to answer any other questions that the council might have. But the suggested motion this evening would be to approve the Class C liquor license. Again, this is consistent with the action that council took back in March, uh, in granting their special land use approval.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Jagged Ford Holdings LLC's Class C liquor license And authorize to submit the proper documentation to the Michigan Department of Licensing And Regulatory Affairs Liquor Control Commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks very much. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you. Next up is consideration for the approval of the Code of Conduct and Ethics.
Well, Mayor and Council, um, Kind of related to the statement that we had earlier for Councilmember, um, Ferguson in regards to civility. I recently came across a, um, Code of Conduct and Ethics policy, um, through Michigan Municipal League, And this is on page 87 of your packet. I believe you had a discussion with the Planning Commission at your joint meeting, And that we would hope that all of the boards and commissions, as well as our elected officials and employees, Would adhere to this standard of conduct relative to how we behave with one another And, um, relative to representing the city. So you have those, I think it's 20 points in the document before you for your consideration.
Thank you. Someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the Code of Conduct and Ethics that's presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. How do you propose to, um, enforce 1 through 20? Like, for example, if any of these are violated, how do we support that? Enforce it, should I say?
Well, there's not a mechanism to issue a ticket. But basically, it would, um, be inherent upon you as the elected officials To bring to the attention of the person in violation, that they are not adhering to the standards of our community. If it was an employee, then I would take the appropriate actions relative to personnel policy.
Okay. Um, what's, what's the punishment if any five of us...
So you have to read the, excuse me for jumping in there. So you have to read the, excuse me for jumping in there. In the charter, the charter covers some of this. And there is repercussion to some of these in the charter. And so, um, what we can do maybe at our study session, the next one, is that we can have those, if there's certain ones especially that you are, um, thinking about, we can pull those out. Because there, there is checks and balances there in the charter behind these.
It's mostly just censure.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, if somebody, one of us does something, then the other four, you know, vote to censure. But there's no, there's no real repercussion, at least not based on the charter.
No, and it could, it could be a violation of it, could be considered misconduct in office or constitute misconduct in office, which would be a basis for removal under the charter. Again, I think what Mayor Garrett's suggesting, put this on a study session, we can talk about it and just kind of see how that plays out. But typically, I think, first instance of it would, would be a censure, so the verbal rapperman. And then if it can continue to persist, it, it could be used as a basis for, for, as I indicated, misconduct in office in a removal proceeding. Hopefully, we'd never get to that, but, you know, it just...
Does that work for you?
Yeah, yeah. I was just asking a simple question. Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Is this for city council or for the city employees, for...
Everyone.
It's for everyone, correct? Okay, all right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Um, next, we'll consider the approval of the use of the 2020 Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG funds.
And this begins on page 88 of your packet. And in regards to the public hearing that you just held is for the allocation of funds for the 2020 program year, for the allocation of the $7,000 to provide transportation services.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution for the use of the 2020 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG.
Second? It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the consideration of the approval of the 2020 fee schedule.
Mayor and Council, this begins on page 91 of your packet. And if you recall, we've had several months of discussion in regards to, well, not so much the fee schedule, but, um, alerting you that we needed to update some of these items. Some of the major ones I would point out is that relative to the FOIA request, um, if the documentation is via an electronic media or email, there is now a fee assessed with them providing that information as well. We eliminated the film permit applications because we weren't being overwhelmed with requests to do filming here locally. The police updated some of their fees as well. And some of the permit fees were updated. I won't go through all of them, but they are outlined in the document before you.
Thank you. Someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Lathrow Village fee schedule with an effective date of January 1, 2020.
Second?
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
If I say, is there a discussion behind it? I'm sorry, back up. Any discussion?
I have a question. The revised gun permits, it's no fee for that. What is that, and why is that?
I'll ask the chief to come up to address the gun permits, the gun permits.
The state law regarding gun permits has changed. We used to do a lot of the permits through the city, and now it can be done at any facility that sells firearms. And that's where most of the permits are now being issued. Before, you had to come to your city hall, and we had to issue all the permits. That's not the fact, that's not the case anymore.
Okay. And I'm sorry, you said they can go where else and get them?
Anywhere they're going to buy a firearm.
Really? Wow, okay.
So if I want to go to Cabela's, I can get my permit right there, do my background check, purchase the firearm right there. I don't need to come to city hall first. So that's really kind of eliminated a lot of our traffic for gun permits.
And these are purchase permits? These aren't concealed weapon permits? Those are done through the county.
Okay.
So do we still issue some permits?
We do, but very few.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to remind you that there were two items on the police fees that were deleted that we discussed in the study session.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have the consideration of approval of the 2020 indoor/outdoor rental rates and community service credits. Before making a motion for it, it does have to be removed or put back on the table, or taken off the table.
I'll make a motion to untable the 2020 indoor/outdoor rental rates and community service credit.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Is there any, I didn't do any discussions, yeah, I don't think so. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it is now back on the table. All right. Dr. Mitchell, would you like to explain?
All right, this begins on page 111 of your packet. And we've had several months discussion in regards to the indoor and outdoor rental policies that required some updating. To give you a highlight, the outdoor fees, the policy was already approved, but we made some minor changes to make it align with the indoor policies and rates as well. The, um, the main thing I want to point out is the community service credit program, which is inherent in part of this proposal, in that individuals and organizations, well, businesses, can earn up to 1,000 hours per year in community credits. And those credits expire after two years. They can be transferred with permission of the person who earned them to organizations. So in effect, our community organizations are probably going to have access to far greater, um, use of our facilities without payment because of this program. The credits, however, cannot be used to offset the setup and the cleaning fees. And the one free event that our community organizations were accustomed to having, that part of the process will end at the end of this year. The, um, the actual program, all together with the fees, will go into effect January 1, 2020.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the 2020 indoor/outdoor rental rates and community service credits.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the consideration for, uh, the approval for employee holiday office closing on Friday, December 20th, 2019, at 12:00 noon.
Can I table that?
Right, exactly.
This has become an annual celebration since I've been here, at least, and, um...
No figure.
That party will travel. So, um, as part of the holiday celebration, we want to share in that with our staff and give them the afternoon off and make arrangements for food and just fun and festivities and allow them to start the holiday a little bit early. So we're asking that you allow for this to have the, um, to happen and have the office close at 12:00 noon on Friday, December 20th.
I make a motion to approve the employee holiday and office closing on Friday, December 20th, 2019, if council is invited at 12:00 noon.
As long as you bring a dish.
I second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Yes. How late is this? Until, is it until 4?
Well, the office is closed until 4:30. I suspect we won't all be here partying still at 4:30. But you never know.
We just want to know what time we were supposed to show up, just in case I scheduled. Anyway, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Um, next, we have a proclamation recognizing January 26th to February 1st, 2020, as School Choice Week in the city of Lathrow Village. I'll just read the proclamation. I was trying to paraphrase it, but that's not going to be easy. So whereas, "All children should have access to the highest quality education possible." And whereas, "The city of Lathrow Village recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in to be successful adults." And whereas, "Quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Lathrow Village." And whereas, "Lathrow Village is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home." And whereas, "Lathrow Village has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children." And whereas, "School Choice Week is celebrated across the county by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options." Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Garrett and the Lathrow Village City Council do hereby recognize January 26th through February 1st, 2020, as School Choice Week in the city of Lathrow Village, Michigan.
So, I'll make...
So, we don't have to do a motion?
We don't? So this is, did we, this is the first, first time that we've done this? We've done this, did we do this last year?
Yes.
We did? This is excellent. Maybe I wasn't aware, all right.
City administrator?
I appreciate that. So is this going to be on our website where parents will know and...
Yes.
About the school, good.
Wonderful.
I have nothing further to add. We had received the request from, I forgot the name of the person, to...
Put it on there?
Yes. So you have the resolution, the proclamation before you.
Thank you. So, do you have anything to report on?
Oh, my report. I thought you meant that report. Never mind.
I know, that's why I didn't let her go. I'm like, okay.
Slow today. Okay. All right. Let's see, um, we had an election on November 5th. Congratulations, everyone. And also, the Road Village bond measure was defeated. Relative to the administration, we've started having conversations to set up accounts with Staples and Amazon so that we have a systematic approach to ordering supplies and an approval process that we're putting into place. I want to remind everyone, the city hall will be closed on Thanksgiving, in celebration of Thanksgiving, November 28th and Friday, November 29th. And thank you again for the Employee Appreciation Day. It will be closed from 12 to 4:30 on December 20th. We had the joint meeting with the schools, and I have already put a link onto our website to access the Southfield Public Schools on our website. And we are receiving their communications as well. So that line of communication is definitely more fluid and robust already. The monthly staff meeting was held on November 12th, and the next one will be on December 10th.
I wonder what day that is? Just my birthday, go ahead. I try to be known, let it be.
The leaf pickup has been really interesting this year.
Yeah.
It started off with snow. So, um, the guys are trying to pick up the leaves if they're not frozen and covered with snow. So you may see, you know, your leaves not being picked up, but your neighbors are. So it kind of depends on what the condition is relative to sun thawing them. So, um, right now, we haven't made a determination on if the leaf pickup season is going to be extended. It depends on the weather. A couple of communities have already just shut down their leaf collection and just are shoveling the leaves into the side of the road. So we're hoping not to do that, but it's very much weather dependent. Want to remind you that the Board of Review is meeting on Tuesday, December 10th. That is only for correcting clerical errors and mutual mistakes of fact. And the winter tax bills will be going out about the end of November, and those payments are going to be accepted starting December 1st through Valentine's Day. February 14th, unpaid bills will be turned over to the county on March 1st, 2020. For the police department, one of our vehicles was damaged in an incident. The alarms, I want to remind...
How's the officer doing?
Yeah, that was, uh...
Last night, yes.
Is he all right? Thank you.
Yep. And, um, I, we're going to start enforcing our alarm ordinances. So businesses and residents who have alarms, one, they should be registered. The fee is $20 for three years. And there is a, um, a penalty if you have more, three or more, more than three false alarms in a 12-month period. And we do have some frequent flyers in regards to that. Our officers are having a potluck dinner for the entire community. I think over 50 people have confirmed so far. That's going to be on November 22nd. That's a Friday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's $10 to bring a gift, and you can RSVP with Officer Carmen. The DDA's been very busy. And they're going to have Small Business Saturday and Artisan Fair on Saturday, November 30th, and Lathrow Village Bingo. So, and I was told to do this with as much enthusiasm as I did for Yancey, but that's, that's hard. But, on Saturday, November 30th, between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., our community room is going to be filled with vendors with unique handmade items. And some of these include Mixing With Love Bakery, The Comfort Wear Jewelry, Holgistics, Herbal and CDB Products, Michigan Candles, Embroidered Cards by Virginia, Jordan Hopkins Photography, Earthing Works, Reclaimed Wood Art Designs for You, Bogart's Bakery, those are dog treats, Keto Sweets and Treats Bakery, Affirmative Diva Collection Dolls and Art, Brenda Fern's Custom Bags and Art, Black Cat Coffee and Jams, Trinity Wire Creations for Art and Jewelry, and Spice Girl, Custom Blend Spices. So we hope everyone will come out and enjoy. It's also small, um, shop local for small businesses. We have 150 businesses within our 1.5 square mile. And we're asking people to come out and play Lathrow Village Bingo. And the county is also hosting an opportunity to win, I think it's up to $5,000. So you buy and text, and you can possibly win money as well for shopping by showing your receipt. So everyone's encouraged to come out. Um, the DDA is also having an informational meeting and open house on Tuesday, November 19th at 4:30. The Comprehensive Plan Open House is on Wednesday, December 4th at 4:00 p.m. Their regular meeting is Friday, December 13th. The Ferris State students are coming up with some plans and proposals for the use of the Lathrow School. And they are going to have their presentation on Friday, November 22nd at 12:00 noon. There will be lunch, and everyone's invited to hear their, um, their proposal. The resident survey on their vision for Lathrow Village is still available. There's a link on Survey Monkey that's on the website. The Recreation Department's having a trip to Frankenmuth on November 20th. I'm really bummed that I can't go, but I think there's still some seats available, $25 for residents. The tree lighting ceremony is Tuesday, December 17th. The mayor has confirmed. It starts at 7:00 p.m., and we hope everyone will be there. They are going to have a, a bus tour of lighted homes that's sponsored by the Lathrow Village Homeowners Association. And Bo's Catering Truck will be on site selling snacks, as well as some coffee and hot chocolate will be available for sale as well. Breakfast with Santa is Saturday, December 7th. And the Dr. King Celebration, there's a correction in your report, is going to be on January 20th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And we are working with the Southfield MLK Task Force as well to coordinate some of the activities. Southfield Road, the reconstruction, we had a meeting with the Road Commission today, as well as a joint meeting with the city of Southfield and Beverly Hills about a week ago. So that should be moving forward. They're in the process of doing the environmental assessment. And we're looking forward to having our next joint meeting on January 23rd, 2020. And I see Council, County Commissioner...
Congresswoman.
...here. And in regards to that, we hope that you'll be able to join us as well. And the Lighthouse Pantry Wish List, we have a box downstairs. We're working with the Lathrow Village Community Foundation in regards to collecting food, as well as other pantry items that will benefit Lighthouse. There's been a lot going on. And I also want to remind you that the Lathrow Women's, Lathrow Village Women's Club, their holiday fund, have a holiday fund for children, for the children of Officer Ember. They're going to have a luncheon on December 2nd, and they're accepting donations for that as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. City Attorney?
Uh, nothing for me.
The Sacwa and Sacra Quarterly Report?
They've been issuing quarterly reports, and I've included them in your packet. There's nothing very noteworthy that I want to bring to your attention. But in regards to the lead and water issues that we're facing as a state... to the lead and water issues that we're facing as a state, and how, and how to address those, our staff is working on meeting the baseline requirements and having that entered into a GIS system, and then going forward, looking at how do we prioritize the remediation of those few homes here in Lathrow that may have the actual lead connections. The SACWA, South Oakland County Water Authority, is looking at getting a bid to go out so that we can have a discounted rate as communities relative to any of the remediation work we may have to do.
Thank you. Any unfinished or new business? Hearing none, I would make a motion to adjourn. Second? Oh, no. I don't make a motion.
You said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, I'll take a moment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.